We'll call our Budget and Finance Subcommittee to order. We have two items on the agenda, the Staffing and Reconciliation, Fiscal 23, and Quarterly Budget Status Report. Mr. Malaney?
Okay. We'll start with the staff reconciliation. We do this every year. Over the summer, due to class size changes and needs of the system, there may be some variation. This time around, there was not too much of a change. For academic classroom staff, there was a reduction of 0.5 from Snug Harbor. That wasn't a reduction in position, that was somebody who went into a grant, a Title I grant. So, from the QPS budget, there was a reduction of 0.5 in academic classroom teachers. For academic program staff, we increased the art positions by 1.3. That was needed due to contractual obligations for prep time at the elementary schools. Just the way the system was working out, we had to increase to 18 staff members, which is close to the music amount. And then for academic support, there's an increase in .2 psychologists. That was a person coming out of a grant. So, overall, there was a net increase of one professional staff that was unintended when we did the original budget. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Questions, anybody? Keep going, Jim.
All right. Moving on to the quarterly budget I put before you. The fiscal 2023 budget of $126,439,644 had an increase of $6,149,463 over the previous year's budget, making this another budget-building year, as we all know. The mayor's appropriation was $6,549,463, or 5.73 percent increase over the prior year. Projected circuit breaker funding was increased by $600,000, and there was a decrease of $1 million from the CARES Act, or the SO-1 funding, that was used the past two years to reduce salaries specifically for custodial. So, the increase allows us to meet all our contractual obligations and provided for an additional $4.2 million for budget building. These funds were used to increase staff by 17.65 position, to address academic classroom teachers, academic programs, and academic support. So, where we stand as of September 30th, there were two payments made to teachers for the new school year. So, this will result in approximately 7.7 percent of the salary lines being expended by September 30th, with approximately 92.3 percent available for the remainder of the year. As you can see, we have, in the classroom, academic classroom teachers, 92.5 percent. So, that's sufficient currently to get us through the year, as well as to cover any raises for step increases or level increases for the February timeframe. For academic classroom teachers or for academic programs, it follows the same line. 7.7 percent should be expended, and with the remainder of 92.3, there's a remainder of 92.76 percent in the academic program line. Under academic support, it follows the same pattern with 92.86 percent available. For the rest of the academic support, it's broken up mostly between 52-week employees and 40-week employees. So, the clerical, there were 12 pay periods for this period, not 13, so we'd be looking at approximately 23 percent being expended and 77 percent being held in reserve. The clerical line is only got 71.25 percent. There was vacation buyback for three individuals. These were IT techs who had left us, so that's why we're, have a slight deficit in that line at this period in time. The superintendent line is, the assistant superintendent, directors, department heads are all falling in line in the principles with where they should be budgeted for the year. The aides is a little bit lower than it would normally be under the 40-week. That's partly due to the fact that we're having difficulty in getting the number of aides that we need, but we're still running along fine. The part-time professional line has 60 percent remaining, 39 percent expended. That's high, but that's because of the summer programs that's in there, so that amount's fully expended. So, overall, for the academic support, we seem to be in very good shape moving forward. For the non-academic support, again, we're looking at the 40-week employees should be having approximately 80 percent available for going forward. So, that clerical's in a good position. The custodial, 75 percent, is a little bit higher expended than the 73 we'd like in there, but they have settled, one of the first units to settle for their raises. So, this budget did not include the raises. There's money for the raises in the budget, but the individual line items don't have it. So, that's why it looks as though there's a little bit of a deficit in that line item. The maintenance is following the same line, and they also took the, settled their contract early. Security is a little lower than it should be at this time, but that was due to retirement of one of the individuals, so there was a buyback in that sense. So, for the rest of the year, we should be fine with the breakage for the new people. Again, the aides is a little bit low. Even the office aides, we're having a little bit of difficulty in getting those. But all the rest of the line items are in perfect shape for getting through the rest of the year. We've expended $9,207,823 for salaries, and we have $92,077,889 available, and this will be able to get us through the rest of the year quite comfortably. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the salary side?
Anybody have questions?
Just an informational question, Jim. What does it mean in the reserve under, under the non-academic support? What is that money, and where did it go?
It hasn't gone anywhere yet.
It says it's 100 percent used, doesn't it? Or what's left?
100 percent is available, remain. Those were the set-asides for the raises, contractual raises.
Okay.
The previous year, they were all on the city side. This year, they were built into ours.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Malaney.
All right. Just for the academic expenses, we're right on target where we typically are for all of our expenses. Again, we're not too far into the school year. The main ones, we always like to keep an eye on, the tuition line, as well as the transportation line. But right now, we seem to be in very good shape with those, and we're constantly working with the transportation department, as well as the special ed department to monitor those expenses. So, currently, we've expended, among academic expenses, $5,686,893, and we have available $19,467,038 to get through the remainder of the year, which, again, should be sufficient.
Any questions on the expense budget? Anybody? Thank you, Ms. Malaney. We'll adjourn our Budget and Finance Subcommittee. I think Mrs. Lebo's taking over?
Yep. Call our Policy Subcommittee meeting for Wednesday, October 26th, to order. It is 5:40. And the first item on the agenda we have is the naming of Point Webster Middle School field for Private John Mariano. And I'd like the mayor to speak on this, please?
Yeah, we talked about this early on. This is the space at Point Webster. Private Mariano was killed in the Korean War. He grew up in that neighborhood, went to that school, and we thought it would be a nice gesture. So, anybody has a question, be happy to answer it, but I think we're ready to, we're in committee for a bit. I think we're ready to move on to get it to full committee.
Do we have any questions? I see none. Let me make a motion.
Motion to accept naming Point Webster Middle School field for Private John Mariano.
And I will second that. All in favor of the Subcommittee members?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We'll move back to the main committee. Next item on the agenda is QPS cellphone and other personal electronic devices usage policy for students. And I will have, before you, you have a copy of the questions that would be going out. And at this time, we'll have a discussion on if anyone has any changes to any of these questions or comments about them.
I have a question. So, three and 10 identical questions.
So...
Throw you to Mrs. Olt.
So, the way the Google survey is structured, when the staff member answers which grade level that they teach, you know, elementary, middle, or high school, it'll send the elementary and middle school to number 10, which is the shorter, and then the high school teachers are asked to, ask the questions, answer the questions from three through nine. So, that's why it's repeated. It's just the way the format works. It won't be visible to the person taking the survey.
Understood. So, and then the difference is, once you, everybody fills out three regardless of grade, I mean, three and, or 10, regardless of grades.
Yes.
And then what's the difference with four and 11? Is that what you said? So, if you fill out three, you go to four?
Yes.
And if you don't fill out three, you go to 10 and then 11?
So, if you, on number two, if you choose elementary or middle?
Yeah.
You skip to question 10?
Yes.
Okay. If you fill out high school, then you answer all of the rest of the questions through number eight?
Oh, I get what you're saying.
So, elementary, middle school, just answer 10 and 11? And the reasoning is that the high schools have implemented, you know, asking students to not have their phones visible during class time, and so it's actually asking the high school staff members about their experiences this year with the new focus on students not having their phones out during class time.
So, there's written guidance from principals?
Correct.
To staff, only in the high schools?
Correct.
In the other schools?
It's not expected that students have their phones with them. They're, they're expected to be in their lockers.
And they know that, how?
That is part of the, students know that. It's part of the student handbook at middle school. As a parent, I definitely knew that.
And the orientation, too.
And the orientation, but that's definitely communicated. And I, we believe that most elementary schools are not seeing this as an issue, but this will tell us that.
Right. And so, in the handbook for the other grades, it's not explicit?
It's, I believe that it's communicated to the students that the expectation is their phones will not be, their phones will be in their lockers.
So, if you, if you answer three, you continue all the way through eight?
Yes.
And so, yeah, so I add another question. So, it says, "Student cellphone use or other personal electronic device, devices are," and it's a leading question. It says, "Are disruptive in my class?" Instead of, "Are disruptive, are constructive, have no impact."
Okay.
You know?
I kind of like how it's worded, because it says, "Strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree." So, they're making the option whether or not they agree with the question and which format they... That's how it reads to me.
So, then should we add the other points? Should we add the other points? Like, should there be a question that says, "Student cellphone use or personal electronic device is, have no impact in my classroom? Strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree." You know what I'm saying? So, there are three different, three different options to... No, I know, but, but I'm saying, just by saying it's disruptive leads you to believe that it's disruptive, and it may well be disruptive.
They can agree that it's disruptive, though they can disagree that it's not disruptive. They have a choice.
Or they could agree that it's constructive, if they're using it for...
Can I talk about this?
Sure.
I don't have any problem with Mr. Guttrow's added question. I don't think it's going to give us any different information, but I understand why that might sound like it's leading someone, because you have disruptive in the question. So, I would be willing to add that second question, rather than change the first question.
Easily done.
Did you say that second state, question again?
I mean, the way that I put it was, "Student cellphone use or personal electronic device use are disruptive, constructive, or have no impact." You know, that...
Yeah, I wouldn't like that.
You didn't even like it.
It would have to be three separate questions, then.
Yeah.
We can do three separate questions, if you want.
One being what, no impact?
So, it would be no impact, constructive, and disruptive would be the three separate, same question, but having those word changes, three separate questions.
This is assuming that the students are using their cellphones, so...
Yeah. I mean, I don't feel strongly, I just feel that it's a leading question.
It is.
Without question, so...
I mean, I'd be fine either way, Mr. Guttrow, if you would like it put into three questions. We can totally add three questions.
And then the, the other, which is under both, which I think is four and 11, it says, "I primarily find students using their cellphones or other electronic devices for texting, phone calls, social media games, schoolwork-related, taking pictures or recording videos, cheating on schoolwork." And I didn't know if we should just add "other," because we do have a narrative question elsewhere. I don't know what the other would be.
Ms. Lebo?
I don't know, as a former teacher and current teachers, how you would know what they were using their cellphone.
Exactly.
Because as soon as they, you see it.
Yeah, exactly.
It's gone. So, I don't know, I mean...
This is if caught, right? If caught using their cellphone, what do you believe?
What do you think?
What they were using it for?
I just don't, I don't, I'm not sure. And there's, and there's a lot of other things that Mrs. Lebo was talking about, but I'm just not sure anybody would know that. They're just using them, and it's disruptive?
Yes.
Or not? Or it's constructive?
Right. It's either, they look like they're on it, you don't necessarily know what they're doing. And, and what is that, and I'm masking the body here. What is that data, when, if we, if the teachers speculate, or if it's, if, you know, I don't know, would it have to say, "If you observe a student using their cellphone, can you tell definitively if they were texting, if they, you know, or were they just using the cellphone in the class, and they say, 'Put the cellphone away'?"
How about we, I have two things about four and 11. I think the other one was 11, right? One, maybe you put, "To the best of my knowledge," right? And then, I would say also, "Why do we have to mark only one?"
Yes.
Can be as many as, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Whatever they...
Okay.
So, that, I would say maybe that.
And Mrs. Lebo and I were talking about this, you could rank them, top three reasons you think.
Well, you'll see, you can put whatever you think, but then when we pull a report, we'll be able to see what the biggest, you know, thing is.
I just don't know if, I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure you're going to get the information.
It'd just be, it's just, again, "To the best of my knowledge," whatever, you know, just to kind of get an idea of what they might be doing. Do you have more, anything else?
No. So...
I agree with the other at the end, too, that would be a good, good idea to put, "I am not aware," or something to that effect.
Or, "I can't tell."
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah. Some kind of an "I don't know," or whatever at the bottom as an "other," not aware of, saw use, but not aware of what they were doing, something like that. That wouldn't be a bad idea. Mr. Guttrow, are we finished?
I think so.
Okay. Ms. Cahill?
I had another, let's see. What was number five? "Students' parents notified of cellphone, personal electronic cannot be used during class. Do you feel this practice has been helped alleviate some of the issues you previously experienced?" I think for like number five and number six, the two, they both have, again, choose one. And I think in both, it's too vague by just choosing one. I'd like to see some kind of a short essay to explain, you know, what kind of issues were they having, and what were, how has, has it been alleviated by calling parents or whatever? Or, is it too harsh, it's about right, it's too lenient? If they pick too harsh, why? If they pick too lenient, why?
I'm sorry, so they are expected? They are expected, where the line is under, see where it says number seven?
On number seven, so not in...
So, if they choose that they feel the practice is too harsh, it takes them to this and asks them to write something.
So, it's going to automatically take them to those numbers?
Yes, yes.
Just once they click it?
Yes. So, they click one, and it takes, and it asks them to be specific?
Yeah. And so, I don't know, and maybe in number five, the same thing, you know? If, if they feel like, "Do you feel this practice has helped alleviate some of the issues you previously experienced? Yes, somewhat, no?" Well, and I guess the issues are up above, right? So, that would be, that would be okay. And my only other question, I guess reviewing the whole thing, is, is it, do we think it's, is it necessary to have them go from the, the middle school to, you know, go from number, when they pick middle school to go to the next, like, skip those questions and go to 10?
They won't see them at all.
They don't see them at all?
They don't see them at all.
But do they, do you feel like those issues don't apply to, to that level? Like, even the middle school kids?
Well, we didn't change the practice. And I thought that was, I thought that was what part of what we were trying to determine was at the high school level, if changing the practice, and I'm not calling it a policy, because school, only school committee can create a policy, but changing the practice has made a difference. Where the middle school practice hasn't changed. That's why, you know, so we can survey them further, you know, or we could ask the middle school teachers all the same questions. It's easy, it's easy enough to add kind of brand, you know, in the Google form. You know, you could say, "I'd like to ask middle school teachers all these same questions." If, if that's what you'd like to do, we can do that.
I mean, I think if we, in my opinion, if we're surveying them, why not get a good feeling for what they're experiencing? If they're, if they're not having any of these issues, they can, they can answer in that way, but maybe they are, and we don't know. You know, if we're going to do it, why don't we survey everyone?
I think you might be suggesting...
Other than the elementary, because that's not something that they're, they're not even dealing with that, right? At elementary level.
Well, we're going to ask them that, too, you know, if they are, but...
Well, I, I think that, you know, certainly question five wouldn't work, because that's a change in policy that's headed to high school only. So, you couldn't really ask them that. I think you could maybe add a question in there about, besides asking them if it's disruptive, and that's a leading question. Besides asking them if it's disruptive, you could ask them if they're seeing use.
Yeah.
I'd be more interested in that, if they're seeing use of cellphones.
Yes.
Right, and that's what the next question does.
No, because they're not going to know the answer to the next question.
No.
I just want to know if, if it's happening, not if they know what is being used.
Okay, yes.
I just want to, and I also want to make sure that we can tease out the elementary from the middle school responses.
We can, yes.
Yes.
But I think question five would be confusing and leading them to something that they were doing something wrong, or hadn't noticed something, or...
Yep.
Ms. Lebo, did you?
Good.
You're good? Okay. Mr. Guttrow?
So, back, and, and I was reading when Mrs. Cahill was talking on, on question five. Did we decide to modify that or anything? Because I did have a question on question five. You know, I feel like a useful question would be, "Are you aware of the cellphone policy in your school?"
For teachers?
Whoever we're giving the survey to. "Are you aware of it?" Is the first question. And, because that's, that's important, because if they're not aware of it, that would tell me that we need to find a different way to communicate the policy to, to parents and teachers, which I think is a reasonable thing.
So, this is strictly a staff survey? This is, this is just for staff?
Staff, okay. So, are they aware of it?
Should be the first question.
Yeah.
Yeah, should be the first question.
Okay.
And then, the other part that says, in question five, "Do you feel the practice has helped alleviate some of the issues you previously experienced?" So, the question to me is, what are some of the issues that they previously experienced? You know, if we're...
Have they been, have they that?
Is, I don't know, you tell me? You know what, so we are, we're asking them a question. Is, is that referring to, to question four?
So, question four could be reworded.
So, we, we're going to put, what did we say for question four? We were going to say...
"To the best of my knowledge."
"To the best of my knowledge, to the best of your knowledge, you find students using their cellphones for these issues here, texting, phone, social media, whatever."
Yeah.
And so, that would be, when you pull a report, you're going to see, you know, someone picks four or five of those. Then question five, they might answer...
We're going to add, we're going to add "other" also in there.
And "other," whatever, you know, whatever's in there. Then question five, they'll write either "yes, somewhat," or "no." So, that will show you...
Yes.
The answer to that.
Yeah, so I, I would think, "Are you familiar?" And then question five should be one and two. No, or, or not one and two, but who are you, and then what grade level? And then I would think, "Are you familiar with the cellphone policy, and has it helped alleviate issues?" And then you get into the student cellphone use or other personal electronic devices, whatever the word, I like the language that Mrs. Lebo said. Our students can, you know, continuing to use cellphones or personal electronic devices in the classroom. And then if, I mean, if you want to use the, are they disruptive? And then the, "To the best of my knowledge," is what you said, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
For, for question four.
Of what, whatever they would pick there.
Yeah.
You know?
Got it.
So, then when you pull the report, whoever it is, like, you're not going to see, we're not going to see, are people putting their names?
No.
Okay, so this is anonymous, but I'll be number 10, let's say. And I'll pick that I feel like it's disruptive, right? Let's say I agree. Then I pick four or five of these things, texting, games, and cheating, let's just say.
Or, I mean, you could put, "I don't know," to Mrs. Lebo's point.
Or "other," or...
You know? "Other," or "I don't know."
Yeah. So, that's going to be added there. So, then when you pull the, you're going to see, "I answered that, I answered those four things." And then I'm going to say, it's going to ask you if you feel like the policy has made a difference in the usage, and then you'll see your answer here will be "yes, somewhat," or "no." You know what I mean? So, you're going to, so that'll all be there for you to see exactly how that progresses from three to five. Does that make sense?
It does. I, I just don't know the value that I'm going to get, to know if the students are texting, making phone calls, doing social media, playing games. None of that is, is okay in the classroom, right? Is anyone going to, is a parent going to disagree with that? I doubt it. None of that, you know, certainly taking pictures and recording videos is inappropriate. The, the only time student use would be with the consent of a teacher, I would imagine, if, if, you know, for some reason they don't have a Chromebook or whatever, and they wanted to calculate, I, I don't know, you know? But to me, it would be at the teacher's discretion, but, so, you all tell me if...
And we can take that, if you don't, if you don't think that question's valuable, we can take it, we can take it out.
Well, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that teachers can accurately say it based on Mrs. Lebo's point, and then even if we had it, there's only, there's only one value.
Use or not use, I agree.
Okay.
I actually think what Doug said, too, might be a good, I mean, think about with the teacher's consent, or without teacher's consent. So, that would be, it's disruptive, because they're using it without the teacher's consent in the classroom.
I could be wrong, but I, last year, the teachers could make exceptions.
Well, that's...
And I don't believe that that's happening now, because the schools have Chromebooks to lend, if you don't have your Chromebook. So, my belief is, and Mr. Maloney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that students are not allowed to use their cellphones, even if it was under teacher guidance.
Correct, that's the directive of the principals.
So, I don't think that's happening.
So, student comes in, no Chromebook, teacher what, calls the office and says, "Bring your Chromebook down," and it's delivered?
We would def, the principal would, or the teacher would work with the, to make an accommodation for the student. We do have extra Chromebooks if they need them. But I haven't heard that being a major issue at the moment.
And we could check with the, with the principals on that at some point in time.
Yeah.
Like, that's, and I believe that there are classrooms that have Chromebook carts in them, too. Is that true?
That's at the elementary level.
At the elementary level, okay.
This is one of the...
I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, in terms of sequence, once the survey is given, does it come back to the Subcommittee or the full committee?
Subcommittee.
Okay.
So the goal, the goal is, was, is to get this revised, um, and then get it out, and so that the data can be shared with you. So we have a subcommittee on November 9th.
Okay.
So, but that's where we'll have to discuss the revision, you know, of, of these, you know, of these questions. The high school principals will also be here, because that's the same night they're having, we have the teaching and learning subcommittee where they're presenting their SIPs, and I've asked them to stay for that policy subcommittee, because that's an opportunity for you all to ask them questions as well about this.
Like we planned.
I just have one other possible, um, change here. In question number five, to Mr. Gattuso's point, instead of saying help alleviate some of the issues you previously experienced, could we say has helped to create a better learning environment? Because even if I hadn't experienced those, I might feel that the learning environment is much better now.
I like that better.
Mm-hmm.
And also, is this going to, um, staff or just educators?
Just, just educators. So it would cover anyone who's a, a professional staff member? So I mean, guidance, staff, psycholog, you know, any of, anyone who interacts with students.
We didn't include the nurses?
Hmm, the nurses as well, yes.
I just wonder if those people-
They're not listed, okay.
I just wonder if those people may not have ever seen this problem.
Sure.
And maybe we should identify who they are.
Well, they will, so when we break the data down, that, that's why we asked the question first about what grade level, and then what type of position do you have? Because then we can, you know, we can say, okay, these people are all the classroom teachers.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Gattuso?
Yeah, one more question. Um, question six, after rereading that, I feel like that's a leading question as well, and, and it's, it's inconsistent with language. So the, the question that I mentioned before, are you aware of the current cell phone policy, which I assume is a yes or no? Um, then, this would say, instead of saying the current practice, I would say, um, and, and I wouldn't use the word limiting. I, I would say the current, uh, policy, cell phone policy, or other personal electronic device usage during class time is, you know, the current policy regarding cell phone or other personal, you know?
Or you could be more explicit and say banning, because that's, that's what the practice is, is that it's not supposed to be visible in a class.
Why don't you put like, the, the current, no, cell phone or personal device usage policy is too harsh about right or too lenient?
Yeah. The policies haven't established yet, though.
Or, or the current, or the current practice.
So, oh, it's a practice. So, so that, and that first question would be, are you aware of the current cell phone practice?
Yeah.
But the practice is, was created or by the principal?
Correct.
Okay. So whatever you wanna call it, should be consistent, and-
Pull out of the limiting.
And, and I just pull out limiting. It's, I mean, limiting to me is like disruptive, you know, it, it, it's a leading-
The current practice of restricting cell phone use in the classroom, or other personal electronic device usage, that make it clear?
From during class time? We could eliminate the word altogether.
Yeah, I was saying, is the current-
Just not have the order there at all.
Or personal device practice during class, too harsh, about right, too lenient?
Yeah.
I think Mrs. Cahill's change is, makes the most sense. She said, the current practice regarding cell phone use.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then just-
Take out limiting. Sounds fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we need to make any motions or anything? We just bring it back to the next subcommittee?
Just bring it back, just stays in the subcommittee.
All right, we'll move on. Okay, next thing on the agenda is, school committee policy, nine point seven point twelve, service animals for review and discussion of proposed or revised policy. Julie Graham and superintendent to present.
Thank you. Uh, before you is the, um, service animal policy. Uh, this is something that is required by federal law, under the ADA, as well as the Code of Federal Regulations. Uh, this policy, we have reviewed with our legal counsel specializing in special education, uh, law, and she has approved this as written, and it is essentially, um, a, um, a, an adoption of the Code of Federal Regulation, which requires the use of service animals within schools if certain criteria is met, and that criteria is listed in the FER review.
Okay.
I have a question. Oh, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
It, it doesn't appear as though that there's anything about liability in this written document. I'm wondering if the federal explanation has liability in, in it, because if the animal bites a student, or if the horse kicks a student, or is the Quincy Public Schools liable for that animal's-
That's a good question.
Because there's nothing in it.
Right. So let me address that with our legal counsel, and we can make an amendment to the policy on that. Do you have that?
Point number 10.
Oh, point number 10.
Where?
Oh, there is in there.
Service animals are liable, number 10 on the backside.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for pointing that out.
You're welcome.
Go right ahead, you have the floor.
Sure, thank you so much for having me this evening. Um, as Mr. Malvi mentioned, it had come to our attention that the previous, uh, service animal policy was significantly outdated, and as regulations have changed, um, a couple of students have recently acquired service animals, and families have, um, made the request through the IEP process, um, that the service animals be allowed to accompany their students to school, um, and for us to consider that as part of an accommodation in their, uh, current IEPs. Um, so with the support of the superintendent and assistant superintendent Perkins, we did reach out to our legal counsel and asked her to draft up an updated policy for us, um, which you have in front of you. Um, some of the, the things I would like to make note of is that, before a service animal is allowed to be, uh, accompanying a student, or a staff member actually, into one of our buildings, um, it does need the final approval of the superintendent. If it is a student that is going to be having the service animal, it would need to be in the student's IEP. Um, it would, uh, is definitely not something that is taken lightly, and is certainly is a number of, um, strong considerations to take, um, first and foremost being that would having that service animal present with that student, um, serve to benefit the student? Does the student need the service animal as, uh, part of their disability in order to continue to make progress, um, within our school buildings? Um, a number of the reasons that, um, a, a student may have a service animal, uh, but certainly not limited to, um, is to assist an individual who is blind or visually impaired, uh, to insist, uh, to alert individuals who are hearing impaired, um, to, uh, support individuals that may have a mobility impairment, uh, such as individuals that use a wheelchair, um, to alert persons with diabetes, epilepsy, or other psychiatric disabilities of any changes, uh, to their physical needs, uh, to alert students and/or staff, um, that may be having self-injurious behaviors, um, and to alert caretakers when a, a student may have eloped, um, from their classroom, or from the classroom building, um, and ensure, uh, student safety. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, please.
All right. Um, so where in this does it cover how we handle if the teacher or another student in the class is allergic to dogs, or does not like them, or the dog triggers a trauma for a student in the classroom?
Sure. So there is, um, a letter that would be going out from the building principals, if and when it does, you know, come to our attention that a, a family is requesting that their, uh, child have a service animal. Um, that specifically talks about that, saying, do you have concerns? Do you not have concerns? If you do have concerns, what are those concerns? And each one will be taken individually. Um, as part of ADA, we cannot discriminate as a result of those things, but we do need to make every reasonable accommodation to meet everybody's needs.
Okay. Um, and is there somewhere in here that talks about classroom management for the placement of the service animal as not to disrupt a class? Because I know, like, certain classrooms are structured in a certain way, that students are seated in a certain way, and if a dog came in and was seated under a certain desk, that it might not-
If I'm not mistaken, it is in here, I just need to look for it real quickly, please. I apologize, it definitely is in here, I just need to find it. Um, uh, well, number three does go back to what we spoke about earlier, about, um, the safe learning environment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any health or safety risks to any members of the community, um, and that, you know, that would certainly need to be weighed for all parties involved. And that there was some, I have to, something about a disruption to the learning environment, that it would be considered. And if it's not in there, then that's something that we could consider-
That might be something, I didn't, I couldn't find anything that really specified that-
Talked about that?
Yeah.
Um, under section nine, uh, the, the last sentence, it just says that the animal must be otherwise under the handler's control at all times.
But it depends on who's handling the animal. If it's a student that's handling the animal, then I don't know how that would, would work.
So under 12, it specifically talks about, um, the, the handling of the animal, and if the student is not able to handle the animal, that it is the responsibility of the family to provide a trained handler.
Okay. And that leads me to my next question. Um, the handler, does the handler have a specific certification background, credentials that we would have on file? Um, what is, like, what is the, the background of a handler? And do we, do they, they would get automatically a full background check?
Absolutely, yes.
And that would be kept on file in the school?
Our standard Quincy Public Schools background check, you know, fingerprints and quarry, um, and they would need, um, to have some sort of documentation of being a handler for that, uh, particular animal. And they are very specifically trained, animal by animal. So if you're a handler for, you know, say your dog, I could not then become the handler for your dog. It does, it, it's incredibly rigorous training that they go through.
Okay, and that would go under my other question of being disruptive to the classroom, is having another individual in the classroom being seated beside that child, and how you would position that in a classroom for classroom management? I'm just concerned about that as well.
Yeah, I think we would, we would need to take it case by case for, for each of our, our students.
Yeah.
Um, you know, our, our students are really comfortable with having individuals in and out of their classrooms, and we would certainly work with that classroom teacher, the family, and, you know, the building administration, to ensure that it is the least disruptive thing that we could possibly do. Possibly having a designated area, maybe having that student, um, you know, located in a, a path of travel that is not frequented, you know, those are, we would have to take it case by case for every individual student based on their needs.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around all of this, it's a lot. Um, and then, my unpleasant part of my question, so who's responsible for if the service animal has an accident in the classroom? And, so this is kind of multi-part, so if the cuts, if he has, if the animal has an accident in the classroom, um, or also if the student is the handler, how does the student leave the building to let the animal relieve itself?
Mm-hmm.
And also, cleaning up after the animal, do we have to now negotiate with the contract with the custodians? Because I'm sure this isn't something that is in their contract to clean up after an animal-
Correct.
On, in the school, or outside the school, on our school grounds?
Yes.
Because that would have to be something that would also, so that's like a five-part question on the one topic, so.
Sure. Um, so my understanding is, is that it is the responsibility of the handler, that nothing in regards to that animal is the responsibility of any Quincy Public Schools employee. It is 100% on the handler, whether the handler is the student, or it is a, a trained handler. Um, as far as relieving themselves, again, I'm, I'm kinda learning as we go, I've been, you know, had some great conversations with families, that part of the trainings that the animals go through is that they, um, similar to service animals that work, um, in our, uh, law enforcement agencies, is that these animals are trained to not void and/or relieve themselves for extended periods of time while they are working, because they are working animals. Um, they don't consume food, they don't consume water, so that they can go for great lengths of time, um, without needing to relieve themselves.
Okay.
Upwards to six, seven, eight hours at a time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Lebo?
I just have a, a question and then a comment. So who's gonna manage all of this information coming in about whether the dog is a service animal, whether he's got his, I mean, that puts another load on the 504 team, or the-
It would be part of the 504 or the IEP team, as, you know, part of making accommodations for those students. I don't imagine we're going to have a lot of them, but we are starting to have a, you know, I have a couple of requests already put in. Um, it, in my opinion, I don't think it's going to be that much more challenging than some of the other accommodations that we make for our students to be successful in our programs. Um, definitely gonna be a team effort, and, you know, as each case comes up, we'll take them case by case. I'm sure we'll learn from some things as they go.
So, and I, I'm definitely, certainly in favor of this, if a student needs this sort of thing in their life, um, so that they can get an education. But just as an aside, last year I was bit by a service animal at Home Depot, and the service animal had been trained, and was, had all its shots, and, um, it still bit me, walking by me at Home Depot, and actually, I, I had to, I couldn't get it off my leg.
Wow, I'm sorry that happened.
It was a shishitzu, so I don't really know what kind of service it was providing. She said emotional support, so I mean, I have to believe it, but, uh, this can happen.
Sure. I will say, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, that it specifically says that this is not to cover emotional support animals, and that they are specifically for service animals that are providing a specific service, and that those are working animals. And I certainly don't want to assume anything about-
It does say that in here, because I was looking for it.
And they're not for emotional support animals. There won't be any peacocks coming into our school building.
I have a que-
Physical sensory.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say, it's not for emotional support. Other mental disability that's emotional support.
Okay.
Couldn't other, couldn't other mental disability be emotional support?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I don't see where it says not for emotional, emotional support.
Yes.
Could we add that line in? Could we write?
Sure.
Would alleviate that, being, yeah, a possibility.
Oh, jeez, that's me. I think it's in here somewhere, I did read it myself.
Okay.
You're good? Mrs. Lebo, you're also?
Yeah, sure. Can I ask, um, I, I guess my question is, when, you know, when we do, um, approve the service animals-
Mm-hmm.
Who, who, um, certifies that they are, I think like Mrs. Lebo was saying, I know people who get, um, that the dog is an emotional service dog, and their doctor, like, just a primary, not just a primary care doctor can sign a letter for them stating that they need this, um, animal. So, and like you said, not having it being emotional, but more for other issues that a student might have, who do we go, who do you get that certification and approval from?
So would, it would go back to the IEP team initially, to say, what is the student's disability?
Mm-hmm.
And what is the role of that service animal in supporting that student's disability? And what job, because they are working animals, what job does that dog, um, perform during the day?
So I guess, do you, do you guys get, do you get a, um, a certification from a specific agency or something that says this dog has been trained as a service animal?
It would come from the family, and they also have to provide us with yearly updates as far as, um, all their immunizations and all of those kinds of things.
Okay.
So it would need to be part of the student's IEP process every single year, that if that accommodation continues, that those documents will need to be updated yearly as well.
Yeah, so I guess, so that, that's the point basically, is mostly about that that dog is a horse, miniature horse, is, um, certified by an agency that has trained these animals, so that they are doing the job the way they're supposed to be doing it.
And the families go through pretty extensive training as well.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, they, weeks if not months of training, and then the, you know, that the family stays at a training facility, and there's, it's incredibly rigorous. These animals are, are trained to work specifically with an individual with a disability, and the process is, is long and tedious, but the results are, are pretty amazing.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gattuso?
No, I didn't have any questions.
Okay, all right.
Excellent, thank you.
I did, one other thing I wanted to point out, um, in section 12, um, subsection B, um, you have, um, who is unable to care for or supervise his service animal. Could we change that to their service animal?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Pronoun change.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right, um, do we need to make any, you can make a motion, motion to accept with the changes?
As amended. Make a motion to accept as amended.
Um, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call, uh, to order the regular school committee meeting of Wednesday, October 26th. Superintendent, please call the roll.
Mr. Begoli, Mrs. Cahill?
Present.
Mr. Gattuso?
Present.
Mrs. Hubley?
Present.
Mrs. Lebo?
Present.
Mrs. Santoro?
Present.
And Mayakoke?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing, and I refer to the superintendent for a few memorials.
Thank you. If, uh, everyone could please keep in your thoughts and prayers, the following individuals and their families, who were Quincy Public Schools staff who passed away. First is Wendy Hanlon, science teacher at Atlantic Middle School for 24 years. Next is Diane Riley, food service staff member at the Bernazani Elementary School, who worked with us for the past four years. And Francis Young, business office payroll, staff person for over 20 years. Again, if you could keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Okay, pursuant to the open meeting law, any- Okay, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of October 12th.
Yep, motion to approve.
On a motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now the executive session minutes for October 12th. On a motion of Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Guttrow, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Open forum. This is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forum may submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Interested parties may also submit written statements to QSCOopenforum@quincypublicschools.com. At this time, is there anybody here to speak at the open forum? Please come forward. State your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Austin. I live at 215 Adams Street in Quincy, and I'm fifth grade teacher at Parker Elementary School. And I've come this evening to respectfully request a fair and equitable contract for the members of the Quincy Education Association. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Andrews. I'm a lifelong resident of Quincy. I live at 45 White Street. I teach third grade at the Bernazani Elementary School, and I've come to school committee tonight to ask for a fair and equitable contract for myself and my colleagues. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Collins. I live at 88 Hillside Ave. in Quincy. I'm a teacher at Broadmeadows Middle School, and I am here this evening to respectfully ask for a fair and equitable contract for the members of the Quincy Educational Association.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Davis. I am electrical technology instructor at Quincy High School. I live at 7C Ave. in Quincy, starting my 20th year this year. And I'm just here tonight to respectfully ask for a fair and equitable contract for the members of the Quincy Education Association. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Andrea Curtin. I live at 180 Sammaset Ave. in Quincy. I teach at Squanum School, and I have children at Quincy High and Atlantic. And I am asking respectfully for a fair and equitable contract for all Quincy teachers and educators. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Evangeline Lee, and I live at 134 Grandview Avenue in Quincy. I'm here this evening to respectfully ask for a fair and equitable contract for the members of the Quincy Education Association. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan Matthews. I live at 44 Ridgeway Street. I teach at Quincy High, and I'm here to ask for a fair and equitable contract for the members of the QEA. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kate Tedeschi. I live at 84 Colby Road. I work at the Emilio de la Cieza. I'm here tonight to ask respectfully for a fair and equitable contract for the members of the Quincy Education Association. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janet Barker. I live at 205 Manitave in Quincy. I teach at the Montclair School. My son attends Central Middle School. And I'm here this evening to ask for a fair and equitable contract for the Quincy Education Association. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Molly Ehrlich, and I live at 26 Heath Street in Quincy. I have lived in this city my entire life. I am one of the 22 often overlooked school nurses, and I work at Marymount School. I am here this evening to respectfully ask for a fair and equitable contract for the members of the Quincy Education Association. I also ask that you remember all the hard work and hours spent by the Quincy Public Schools nurses during the pandemic to keep students and staff safe and healthy during such a challenging few years. Please take this into consideration when discussing contract negotiations. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison McGowan. I teach fourth grade at the Clifford Marshall Elementary School. I've been teaching 16 years, and I love my job, and I love my kids. And I'm just here to say, I also live in Quincy, 60 Marshall Street, and just want to say that we'd like a fair contract, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Natalie Valenti, and I'm a resident, parent, and teacher in Quincy. That's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to support my fellow educators, my coworkers, and the teachers that educate my son, who is at Marymount. I'm well aware of the issues surrounding this contract, and as a taxpayer, voter, and parent, I'm just heartened to see my job being verbally whittled down to nothing more but a glorified babysitter when I am so much more. Let me walk you through a typical day. It starts around 7:20 when I come to Quincy High every morning. Students see me and follow me up to the library. From that point on, I am teaching and giving 100% of my attention to each student that comes through my door, upwards of 300 kids a day, who are needing individual attention until that final bell rings at 2:30. I address everything from Chromebook issues to assistance with papers, homework, password resets, applications, resume, college or work references, and general information about the school. Beyond that, I'm creating a safe place for the issues my students may be having. Personal issues, family issues, friend and relationship issues, trouble within the community, or a shoulder to cry on when things get really bad. I deal with emergencies involving outside offices, coordinating help with QPS offices, helping students deal with family death, separation, trauma, hearing about fights, trouble with the law, new jobs, engagements, marriages, college acceptances, new siblings. My day is a roller coaster. I'm usually the first or only adult these kids come to when they have an issue, as are most of my colleagues. You may think that dealing with these individual, individual issues would be enough to fill my day, but I also instruct students on how to not get fooled by false information online, cyber safety, find print on the apps they use, how to cite info in a paper, how to find a book, where to go for help with more issues in and out of school, and so much more. I collaborate with teachers, guidance counselors, deans, and other staff members all day long to make sure each and every concern brought to me is taken care of. While in study classes, I overhear so many conversations, sometimes about fights, harassment, issues at home, breakups, secret fears, et cetera, as well about what they're learning, what they're, what they aspire to be, what their celebrations they may be having. As a wise man once said, I am the eyes and the ears of this institution, and I fully utilize my two master's degrees, one that focuses on school counseling and the other with library science. Which brings me to why I'm standing in front of you today. I'm being asked to accept less than what I'm worth. I give my heart and soul to this job. This is my dream job. In a city where I have built a home and life for myself and my son, I am fully embedded in this community. Every student I teach is like my family. My son and I support our community, our family, by going to school plays, choir and band concerts, sporting events fundraisers, and so much more in our free time. But through all of that community building, teaching and listening, et cetera, my colleagues and I get blasted as less than. Your offer to our request as a union feels exactly like that, being treated as less than. Our work isn't valued, understood, or appreciated with the counteroffers that we've seen come across that bargaining table. We have already lost so many great teachers within the past few years to other districts who put their teachers first, knowing full well that a school district that supports their teachers ultimately supports their students and their families. The more involved and respected we are in the community, the more of an impact we can have on students to do the right thing, to take the higher road, the better path. We are the early intervention, and we are diminishing because of your lack of respect, and the students are the ones that are suffering the most because of this. I am asking you to consider the days that we have with each child in this school system and understand our roles within it. We need to work together to be a part of the solution, instead of fighting as enemies in our contract. It's almost embarrassing to have students ask why we wear these red shirts. They see the cracks within the upper levels, and it can't feel good for them to know that the adults they trust every day are being treated so poorly by the people who should be supporting them. I welcome you to come into our schools to talk to me and my colleagues, to get to know who you're harming with unfair negotiations. Let's start working together to prioritize the students. Without a solid partnership, we will continue to crumble, and then where will the students be?
If you want to come to an end, you're over your four minutes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Liz Speckman. I live at 129 Marymount Road. Thank you for allowing us to take some time to talk tonight. So I've been knocking on doors for the Question 1 campaign over the past several months, and during that time, I've knocked on almost 2,000 doors here in Quincy and talked to a lot of educators and families across, across our community. I've talked to educators who have shared with me that they work two and three jobs just to make ends meet. I've talked with educators who would love to work here in Quincy, but they work in other communities because they would have to take a pay cut to come and work in their own community. I have talked to a pair of professionals who love what they do so much, and they work with our youngest, most vulnerable students, and yet they're not getting paid a living wage. Am I going to keep going?
Keep going.
And so these are all educators that love our children. They take care of our kids every day. They go home, they think about them, they work on their plans for them. And I, I wonder to myself, as I'm knocking on doors and talking to our community, what's the message that we're sending to our community when our educators have to work a few jobs, when they can't make ends meet, when they are working so hard they can't, don't even have time for their own friends and family? What are we sending as a community to our, to our, what are we telling our community about what we value? And I've often heard that a budget is a value statement, and I know in my heart that we all value our children and our educators, and I would love to see our budget reflect that and reflect our values as a community. As a side note, Question 1 is going to add more revenue to education to be able to make sure that we can raise those funds for our young people. We know that if we pass Question 1, we have a fighting chance to make sure we get that revenue here in Quincy. And that's what I've been fighting for, and I know a lot of our educators are fighting for, to make sure that we get as much of a chance as possible to get added revenue for our education, for our K-12 education, as well as options like Quincy College. I'm committed to making sure we have that opportunity, and I welcome everyone to join me in that as well. Thank you for your time.
Apologize for the microphone.
Hi, my name is Courtney Perdius. I live at 86 Froggo Street in Quincy, Quincy Point. I'm a mom of three kids, and I didn't have anything prepared tonight, but after hearing all the teachers, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for everything that you do for our students. It's, it's, you know, they are your voice in front of our kids, and I just really ask you to, to listen to them taking time out of their, their night tonight to come and speak with you. But teachers, please know that parents across the city, we see what you do for our kids. We see everything you do, you know, from behind the scenes, everything that's not in your contract that you go over and above for our kids. And I just want to say that we support you and we thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. The other person did give their name and address. She's a librarian in Quincy. Anybody else for the open forum? Last call? Anybody else for open forum? Okay, we'll bring that matter to a close, that part of the agenda to a close. Onto the superintendent's report. Superintendent, Item A, QPS Staff Recognitions Educator Mini Grant Recipients.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. 121 Quincy Public Schools professional educators recently received mini grants of up to $400 each for a total of $40,700. The mini grants will provide support for the academic, emotional, and social development of students. The annual QPS mini grants are made possible thanks to the generosity of 20 school community partnership members, including Mayor Coke, and over $550,000 has been distributed to date. At your place is a flyer which lists all of the recipients, and I just want to congratulate all of our mini grant recipients and wish them all the best with regard to the funding and the planning that they are planning to do with that funding. That will benefit our students and our community. So thank you all and congratulations. Next is Cratos to Crayons. Cratos to Crayons has generously donated a significant donation with regard to a new initiative that they're doing here in Quincy, as they're doing in other districts as well. Their new initiative will supply school districts with season-appropriate clothing donations for students ages 3 to 12 in the fall and spring. Cratos to Crayons provided outfit packs, socks and underwear packs, hygiene kits, and winter coats as well. So thank you to Cratos to Crayons, who continues to be an outstanding partner with the Quincy Public Schools. Next is the upcoming QPS and City of Quincy events. Quincy High School is hosting two community events for younger students later this week. The Student Council is hosting the Haunted Hallways, featuring trick-or-treating games, raffles, and more on Thursday, October 27th, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. The Quincy High School Drama Club is presenting The Legend of Sleepy Hollow, a Halloween panto, on Friday, October 28th at 6:00 p.m. Saturday, October 29th at 2:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, October 30th at 2:00 p.m. I wish all of the cast and the director the best of luck in that production, and from what I understand, it will be a fantastic production of Sleepy Hollow. So best of luck to everybody. The Quincy Parent Advisory Council Special Education is hosting a trunk-or-treat event on Sunday, October 30th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. in the Walston School parking lot. Please preregister by emailing qpac quincy@gmail.com. Last year's event was very successful, the first event of this kind last year. We're hoping that this trunk-or-treat event this year will be just as, if not more, successful than last year. So thank you to QPAC, and of course, all of the QPS volunteers who are helping to staff that event. The first English Learner Parent Advisory Council LPAC meeting of the year will be held on November 3rd at 6:00 p.m. on Zoom. The dedication of the new Abigail Adams statue on Hancock Adams Common will be held on Saturday, November 5th at 11:00 a.m. The North Quincy High School Parent Advisory Council is hosting a holiday shopping expo at North Quincy High School on November 12th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And I do want to just add a couple more congratulations, if you don't mind, and that is, of course, the Quincy, North Quincy High School Marching Band in Color Guard had a busy weekend of competition, securing a second-place finish this past Saturday at the New England Scholastic Band Association Competition in qualifying for the NESBA Regional Marching Band Finals, which will be held this coming weekend. This past Sunday, the band in Color Guard competed at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association Competition at Veterans Memorial Stadium, earning high marks in music, visual, and percussion, and winning the silver medal. Congratulations to the North Quincy and Quincy High Marching Band. At this, at this morning's Massachusetts School Building Authority Board meeting, I have very good news to report. Quincy was invited into the Accelerated Repair Program for projects at Montclair and Walston. As you remember, that deals with roof repair and replacement at, again, Montclair and Walston, and the boiler replacement at the Parker Elementary School. Thanks to Mayor Coke and the Quincy State delegation for their support in securing this project funding, and of course, the school committee and city council for supporting, supporting the filing of the statements of interest for these projects. Next steps will include meeting with the assigned owners, project managers, and beginning the schematic design process for all of these projects, and we're looking forward to doing that and completing this work during the summer of 2023. With that, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the committee on the superintendent's report? Okay, moving to all business, Massachusetts Association of School Committees General Session Resolutions, this is up for a vote. Mrs. Hubley?
Thank you. On November 2nd through 5th, I will be attending the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference as your delegate. Before you, you have the resolutions that we will need a vote on, so that I know how to vote when I get there. The first resolution is- The first resolution is regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students. Therefore, is to be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the great and general court to join with other states in the passage of so-called sanctuary laws to ensure such children and their families have the, quote, "power to, power of enjoying in safety and tranquility in their natural rights and the blessing of life," end quote, as guaranteed by the Constitution of the Commonwealth. If you look at the rationale below, the rationale is the 2011 passage of the Act Relative to the Gender Identity Marked, a Massachusetts commitment to civil rights and transgender residents. When I went to the meeting for the resolutions, there wasn't anybody from the actual resolution who put the resolution forward to describe the resolutions, so I really don't have much to add from the actual places that were putting the resolutions forward. Conversation at the meeting, some members were saying that they felt that this was overreaching the roles of school committee, and others said it's children's rights issues and pertained to school committees in general. It's not that I disagree with the, what is before us, but I tend to agree with the committee members that were saying that this isn't in the purview of our school committee to vote on this. We represent the children and families of Quincy and in Massachusetts, and the way this is written is that it's for residents not in Massachusetts that are coming to Massachusetts. So my vote would be to say no to this resolution, in my opinion. Open up for discussion, and if anybody would like to make a motion on it.
I think that, you know, I don't know if I would say no to it, you know? I think if it's, I don't understand, you know, what the school board is, they're recommending that they send this to legislation to be passed. Is that correct? Is that?
Explain what happens with our vote.
So our vote would be one vote with everybody else's vote, and then the majority would direct the Mass Association of School Committees on how they would want to proceed to legislation and how they would want to encourage them in order to make a vote in behalf of them, how we as a school committees would want them to vote, how they would want them to proceed in trying to encourage this to be passed. So that is why, like I said, the majority of the people in the meeting were saying that this isn't something that's in our purview to inquire, that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees be behind to encourage to pass because it's not school-related.
Okay. Anybody different than Mrs. Hubley?
Is there any information on sanctuary laws? I mean, this really doesn't say.
All I have is what's before us.
All you have is what's before us.
I don't know if I would say no, but can we abstain from it so that they can send it forward and then they can do more, you know?
When is the vote?
I believe it's on, yeah, November 2nd, I believe is when I would be, when they're having the vote. It's either, yeah, I believe it's on November 2nd, I think is when they're doing it. But if as a committee we decide that we want me to abstain, I will abstain from voting.
Any other motions, other than what Mrs. Hubley is recommending?
I have a question, please, on the motion. I have a question on the motion. So we're going to give one vote to you to give to the convention. The convention's going to give one vote coming out of that.
All the school committees that attend will get one vote, and then the majority will win, and then that vote will be the only vote that.
And then, so, can I, if I could, so then, based on majority rule, then Mass Association of School Committees decides if they will lobby the legislature, the state legislature, to pursue it?
Yes.
Okay.
According to what we as a complete body of school committees decides.
Honestly, I don't know what impact that would have on our schools at all. That was a medical thing, and so, you know, I don't mind the fact that somebody could be a sanctuary location, but I don't think it's going to impact our students or our school at all, or anything else to do with children, because it would be children from out of state that can't access this care coming here where we can access it here, and there are states that are trying to not allow them to come here, as well. I'm not even sure what this would sort of accept as a statement.
I think it's a statement, basically, for, you know, for them to go forward to. What I'm kind of concerned, I don't have enough information here to even understand what the whole thing is about, you know? And I hate to put a vote towards something that I don't have all the real implications and how it affects everyone, so.
I agree.
Item two.
We need to have a consensus vote on it.
Well, there's no consensus.
Each one.
Are we all going to abstain?
You going to make a motion?
I did not make a motion. I just made my opinion. That was all.
Mrs. Lebo.
I'll make a motion that we abstain from voting on question, resolution number one.
Okay.
Seconded by Mrs. Cahill. Superintendent.
The goalie, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
Item two.
We will abstain on resolution one, and moving on to item two. So resolution number two is to increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund. The rationale is that, oh, sorry, let it be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to amend Chapter 40, Section 13E by deleting, quote, "two percentage of, 2% of the annual net school funding, spending," end quote, and by inserting the following, and quote, "5% of the annual net school spending," end quote. And I was asking Mr. Mulaney to come up and to tell us if this has anything to do with our school system, because we have the revolving account and special ed revolving account and how that works with us.
This is a separate fund from the revolving, from the circuit breaker. What this does is allows schools, school districts or regional districts to put aside 2% for reserve, much like Mr. Gatto has talked about often for a rainy day. You have to pass this, and I don't believe this school committee has passed this as yet. What it would do is if you had a year where you didn't fully expend all your monies, you could say, okay, for us, right now, you could put $250,000 into a reserve fund that you could use later on for special education expenses. So it would be a little bit of a cushion. We don't currently have this as a, I've gone to the finance section of the bylaws, and I don't, I've never seen that this is passed, but what it would do is allow you to go from 2% to 5% to hold it in a rainy day fund without further appropriation from the city. It would be able to stay without going back to the general fund.
Mr. Santoro?
Others first.
So my question, I think it's a good idea to have it there, you know, so that if we need it, as long as it stays in that, but then you'd have to do it every year, right? I mean, that would be my question. So if you put in the 5% this year and we don't use it, do you have to keep putting in 5% every year?
No, it's capped at 5%, so it would stay rolling over. So as your budget spending went up, you could put more money into it, you could spend down. It doesn't have to be maintained at any particular level.
Okay.
But it's capped at 5%, so you couldn't put in 5% every year and wind up with a large pool of money.
Okay, so that's better. I think that, that's my question. And as far as from your standpoint, right, is that a huge investment for us? Like, will that be a difficult thing to do?
Oh, no, I think, well, what you'd have to do would be work off whatever surplus you had at the end of the year, because typically if we had a surplus, we've spent it on items in the past. We've done purchased computers, we've bought curriculum materials, and we have returned funds to the general fund at the end of the year as well. What this would do is that when we're doing those transfers at the end of the year, we could transfer a certain amount of money into this reserve fund that would be held for future years to be spent without appropriation.
Okay.
Mr. Gatto.
So this is just a mechanism that gives us the flexibility to do it if we choose to do it.
Correct.
I'm going to make a motion to support after discussion.
Mrs. Lebo.
So Jim, we currently don't do this at all.
Correct.
And how often do we have, and this money only comes from this bed line, or does it come from any line in the budget?
No, any line in the budget, but it can only be used and set aside for special education expenses, because those tend to be budget breakers in other districts.
And how often are we requiring additional funds to manage our special ed expenses?
Fortunately, we haven't had to in quite a while. We've gone up in our budgeting for tuitions and transportation in the past, and thanks to the Special Education Department, we've captured an awful lot of funds. Julie has done a great job, and I remember before, just to make sure that we get the most out of our circuit breaker funding.
And how much would our potential percent be?
Well, you'd be looking currently at the 2%, you're looking at around $250,000. So you'd be looking at probably $625,000 you could set aside. So it's not a, it's a substantial amount of money, but in the scheme of things, that could be one tuition, as we've known in the past.
I know. I just, I, we use that leftover money for a lot of great things at the end of the year. Have we ever had more than $625,000 left over to do things like buy computers that are in college?
On a rare occasion many years ago, it's usually not that much is left over. You don't have to do it. It just gives you the option to go up to 5%.
And you don't have to put 5%.
Correct. I mean, you could build it up over years to get it up to that 5%.
Okay. All right.
My question is typically at the end of the year, when we have leftover money, does it not go back to the city fund?
If we do not spend it, it does go back.
Okay, so in this particular event, it would not go back to the city. It would stay within our budget, where this gentleman could also reduce our budget by that amount when he comes and gives us money, correct?
That would be true.
Okay. The other point is that this is not necessarily going to happen. It's just that we're recommending that they bring this to the legislature for them to vote on it in the end, correct?
Correct.
Correct. I just bring those two points up. Thank you. I'm voting no.
Mr. Gatto.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to support Resolution Two.
On a motion to Mr. Gatto, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. Any more debate? Superintendent, call or roll.
The goalie, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
No.
Mayor Koch?
No.
Okay, Resolution Three.
Okay, resolution number three. Membership on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. So I'm going to read the, whereas, so you know, whereas practicing educators and school committee members are prohibited from serving on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and whereas the teaching profession is the only profession or trade in Massachusetts where the holders of a license are prohibited from serving on its governing board, therefore let it be, there are other whereas's there, but let it therefore be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for the enactment of legislation to repeal and the provision of the Massachusetts law that prohibits practicing educators and sitting school committee members from serving on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And this was pretty overwhelmingly from the members that were at the meeting encouraged they were wanting this, so. Concur.
Anybody?
Make a motion to support.
Motion to Mr. Gatto, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Any discussion, debate? Please call the rolls.
The goalie, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number four is preserving local governance of the Massachusetts schools. Whereas the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has no plan, strategy, or timeline for restoring local governance and accountability to the voters of Lawrence, Holyoke, and Southbridge, and therefore let it be resolved, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to restore local governance and accountability for Lawrence, Holyoke, and Southbridge Public Schools no later than July 1st, 2023. The receivership for these schools has been, they've been in receivership, Lawrence since 2011, Holyoke since 2015, and Southbridge since 2016. And the feeling among school committee members is that this is long enough, and they should be going back to local government for accountability for their voters, and they would like us to vote to allow them to be able to have the school committee back over there.
Motion to Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. We approve. Superintendent.
The goalie, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
Mayor Koch?
Yes.
All right. Number five. Personal financial literacy education. Therefore let it be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees by a legislature that would have the effect of ensuring that all students have exposure to personal financial literacy curricula and ultimately graduate from high school with the lifelong knowledge of how to be fiscally responsible to avoid being deterred by financial woes. This legislature should ensure that students of various levels would benefit from curriculum in the Massachusetts public schools that would include content in personal finance literacy. This was noted by some that it would be an unfunded mandate, expressed feelings over this, that it was an overreach, and some said that, it was also noted that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has youth members, and they are in favor of this, and was also noted that Whitman Hansen has noted that they have already added this as a graduation requirement.
Mr. Gatto.
So considering the fact that this past weekend I visited my son, who's a freshman at UNH, and he quoted back to me his financial literacy teacher from a class that he took at North Quincy High School when he was making a financial decision, I'm going to enthusiastically support this. Make a motion.
I believe that we already do this in Quincy, too. It's in our curriculum, isn't it?
Yes.
And I also think that it says exposure.
Yeah.
It's not a mandate like that we have to have a class in a full curriculum. It's exposure, so however our school system deals with it, you know, I think, you know, so putting it in there, as long as it's exposure in some kind of format or content, makes sense.
Is that a motion, Mr. Gatto?
It is.
Seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Superintendent.
The goalie, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Okay, and the last resolution, number six, is the establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. Therefore let it be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to enact or amend legislation which permits municipalities to establish a regional school assessment reserve fund. Basically, what this is saying is that there would be no additional state money would be involved, and it would basically help them to save in high enrollment years for low enrollment years so they can draw from this reserve fund. And my feeling would be to say yes and allow them to do this.
Mrs. Cahill?
Was it, were they mandating that that has to be, like, the regional school systems, their towns and cities, right, have to have this reserve in place? They're the ones that they have to fund it. Isn't that something that they, as a regional, like those communities, should come together and come up with what they feel like is a suitable reserve fund?
It says may establish. Municipality's legislative body may establish and appropriate.
But they should, I mean.
They don't have to, they may.
Yeah. I don't know that it's our, I feel like other school systems shouldn't be requiring them to figure out their finances and their reserve funds, and it'd be like someone telling us that we have to look at our budget and do certain things, although we are doing that with the 2% to 5%.
Yeah, they were coming forward to ask for our help in assistance of doing this. This is from Regional Lake, Silver Lake Regional School Committee is coming forth to ask the Massachusetts, they're asking for everybody to come and help them.
Because they're probably putting in the most money.
It's, it is similar to question two, I believe, except that instead of the money going back to the city, it goes back to seven communities, or the communities that are involved in that. But those schools do suffer from, actually, not recently, low enrollment, but if they have lower enrollment, they still have to maintain those programs. So it could be, but I just don't know why that is. I would like to abstain from this because I don't think it's our.
I kind of feel like they should come up with their own funding issues, you know?
Okay. You making a motion to abstain?
Make a motion to abstain.
Seconded by Mrs. Cahill. Superintendent.
The goalie, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
And Mayakoke.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing what you did. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item five, new business, early childhood program improvement plan. Ms. Graham and Ms. Larry to present.
Here's warm in here.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Carrie Conley, the team administrator at the Delacase Early Childhood Center, presenting with Jen Larry and Julia Seattle, offer her support as well. So tonight, I would just like to first share, and the first slide is our mission statement. I just have to remove that. I can't get it from here. It is the mission of the Quincy Public Schools to provide an enriching program for young children identified with special needs as well as their typically developing peers.
We just want to get this TV on if possible. What if so?
Michaela, if you're listening, you can help us.
High tech.
All right, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start over. It is the mission of the Quincy Public Schools to provide an enriching program for young children identified with special needs as well as with typically developing peers. The program uses developmentally appropriate practices which are aligned with the National Association for the Education of Young Children to provide a safe, supportive, and nurturing environment, and the academic standard is presented in the 2017 Mass Curriculum Frameworks for ELA, literacy, mathematics, and social and emotional learning. In addition, the curriculum meets the social, emotional, cognitive, and developmental needs of our young learners, as schools, families, and community work together to provide the foundations for lifelong learning. The following slides share a program description. We have classes at the children at the Point Webster, Snug, and Delacase. There are currently 359 children enrolled in our program. There are 68 students registered at the Point Webster, 100 students at Snug Harbor, and 191 students enrolled at ECC. This number will continue to increase throughout the school year as students are referred to us for screenings and evaluations, and it is determined that the child is in need of services. The majority of our referrals are received from early intervention as the children are turning three. We also receive referrals and requests from parent letters, local programs such as Head Start, and requests from pediatricians and developmental centers in the area. Our programs offer an integrated model for children between the ages of three and five. Some of our children require a special education program, including classroom support, speech and language services, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. Typically developing neighborhood children are also enrolled in our program to support parent modeling. We are very fortunate to provide every child entering kindergarten a full day program in each of our elementary schools. Our kindergarten programs are also inclusive and provide a diverse range of services based on students' individual needs. Thanks to all your support and resources, we have full-time parent professionals assigned to all of our pre-K kindergarten classrooms. We are extremely grateful for this, and our program wouldn't be the same without them. Here on the next slide, there is a list of curriculum resources, many of the resources that we use in our early childhood classrooms that are aligned with our state standards. In pre-kindergarten, we provide, we have the Telling and Lively Letters, Handwriting Without Tears, Literacy Express, the Hegarty Phonological Awareness Curriculum, which is a new initiative this year that we will be speaking about further, Foundations of Math, CARM Classroom, Tools of the Mind, and PBIS. In kindergarten, we also have Telling and Lively Letters, Handwriting Without Tears, The Journeys Program, Hegarty Phonological Curriculum, Celestial of Math, Foundations of Math, Closed Reading, and PBIS. As you can see, some of the same curriculum materials are used in both our pre-K and kindergarten classrooms. The continuity helps our pre-K students foster greater connections during their kindergarten experience. In both pre-K and kindergarten, we measure student success through assessments. Here are the examples of some of the tools we conduct assessments in the early years. In pre-kindergarten, we have the Early Screening Inventory, which are also considered the ESIP, and they're all students are screened prior to entrance into the program. We also have the Brigance Depending on Age and Informal Assessments to Conduct Information Relating to Students' Progress. In kindergarten, we use the Early Screening Inventory, the ESIK, Amplify M-Class on Dibbles 8, and the DRA, the Developmental Rating Inventory. Next, I'd like to share the reflections of our goal from last year, from the 2021-2022 year. The Integrated Pre-K Team created and implemented age-appropriate components of community circles. Students sat in a circle with their teacher as part of their daily routine to build community within their classrooms. Community circles are an appropriate, are an opportunity for teachers to intercept, to include concepts related to feelings and emotions. To set it up, the teacher has an object such as a talking stick to pass, then they present a prompt such as, "I feel happy when, sunny days make me fail, the color makes, the color orange makes me..." And then in the photo at the bottom, you can see Ms. Laurie Cahill, she is a teacher at the Delacase, and she's leading a circle, community circle in the photo. The students can be seen passing the pumpkin as a prompt for their turn to talk about their feelings. The next photo shows students actively engaged in a pumpkin failing lesson to further enhance their ability to identify and understand feelings. In this respect side, you can see additional images of students engaging and practicing in community circus. Ms. McKayla Green, the guidance council from ACC, read the story Take a Deep Breath by Sue Graves. This is a cute little story about ways students can overcome their fears and nerves by taking a deep breath. They're presented with a series of little pictures, public speaking, no, just kidding. In the respect side, you can see additional students. In the middle, you can see how those strategies that they learn throughout these community circles as far as respect, waiting their turn, waiting for their friends to stop talking, just being able to sit in a circle, keep their own space. That's in the middle. I'm not sure if the slides, it's a little small here, too. Sorry, they're hard to see. Students are displaying expected behaviors in the group, such as remaining seated and waiting for their turn. Our preschools have benefited from the implementation of community circles to enhance their social skills, build their attention, and gain an understanding of being part of a community. The top, whoop, sorry. Let's go back. But that's, the top right corner shows an example of the green and red chart that we use in our program. Listening, sharing, and using kind words are green choices, and red choices are unkind words and not keeping hands to ourselves. We use this throughout the day and use the chart to practice and reinforce the expected behaviors. In our classes, we focus on how we can change red faces into green faces, and the chart is often used to introduce the circle prompt during our daily community circles. The goal number two that the Integrated Preschool Team worked on last year, they collaborated to develop classroom practices to help students identify feelings and emotions in themselves and others. The team met throughout the school year and created a Google Drive where they shared resources and lesson plans. The teachers continued to use this drive to add additional information and resources. The Google Drive is one of the positive things that has happened as a result of the pandemic. The Integrated Pre-Kindergarten Teachers also participated in a training with the therapy staff regarding the use of sensory strategies to help students regulate their feelings. The practice of identifying feelings was incorporated throughout the school day, including circle time, story time, small group instruction, and incidental teaching. The therapists also add to the Google Drive to be shared with all team members. And on this little feeling, it just shows a few of the little curriculum materials that were used in the classroom to reinforce those skills. Ms. Jen Larry will now share the reflection on last year's goals and present the goals for this academic upcoming school year.
Yes.
The next two goals that I'm going to reflect on from last year both pertain to the new curriculum initiatives that we had at the kindergarten level. So goal number three was for the kindergarten teachers began training and initial implementation of the illustrative mathematics core math resource. They participated in trainings in September and January and were provided with lesson plans and materials for implementation. Full implementation of the illustrative math program is expected during the current 2022 to 2023 school year. Full implementation was not expected last year. It was considered an initial rollout, so some teachers implemented some components, and as we go further through the presentation, we'll look at the full implementation for the current school year. Goal number four was related to the new early literacy and universal dyslexia screener, the Amplify M-Class with Dibbles 8th Edition, which was administered three times during the 2021-2022 school year. The teachers met during building ILTs to discuss screening results and develop supports and interventions for individual students as necessary based on their screening results. This was a new state-approved screener that met the state dyslexia screening guidelines for kindergarten students, and you can see some kids working on some literacy activities in a multisensory program down the bottom there to build their early literacy skills. For our new goals for the upcoming 2022-2023 school year for both pre-K and kindergarten, so the first two goals are gonna focus on our integrated pre-K program. Our first goal focuses on phonological awareness for our pre-kindergarten students. So during the school year 2022 to 2023, the Integrated Pre-Kindergarten Team will implement daily literacy activities to increase student learning in the area of phonological awareness using research-based practices in which students learn to manipulate language and hear the sounds in spoken words. This will be measured by students' increased performance of letter name and letter sound recognition and rhyming words on a district-determined measure. The slide shows the curriculum frameworks for the foundational reading skills for pre-kindergarten students. Some of the highlights on these frameworks are for students to be able to identify letters of the alphabet, to identify initial sounds in words, and to identify and produce rhyming words. So the focus of this year's goal is on those three very specific phonological awareness skills. This is a sample of some of the action steps towards achieving this goal. One of the resources that we've purchased for our pre-kindergarten teachers this year is the Hegarty Early Pre-Kindergarten Resource to support their phonological awareness development. The Hegarty program is already being used in our elementary schools, beginning in kindergarten, so its use in pre-K will lead to instructional consistency as students move through the grades. So they'll be introduced to the techniques and the vocabulary for the Hegarty program in pre-kindergarten, and when they get to kindergarten, they'll already be familiar with that program as they move up into elementary school. The teachers also are currently using district-determined measures to progress monitor letter names three times a year, and so we will modify those DDMs to also incorporate letter sounds and rhyming words, which are both skills that are targeted through the Hegarty program. Our second goal for the pre-kindergarten team for the next year focuses on continuing to develop the students' social, emotional skills, which is always a huge part of the pre-kindergarten program. So during the school year 2022-2023, the pre-kindergarten team will introduce a monthly character trait and incorporate character education into play theme opportunities. These opportunities will further develop students' understanding those traits as well as support students' social, emotional wellness growth. This will be measured through both formal and informal observations. This slide has the QPS District-Wide PBIS Monthly Themes Calendar, again, in attempting to align the pre-kindergarten vocabulary and themes that we're working on with the themes that the students in the older grades are focusing on. Again, this will provide for consistent vocabulary around these topics, and we're gonna target the same concepts that older students are working on, but at a developmentally appropriate level. So the themes will be the same each month, but we'll keep the level of instruction appropriate for our youngest learners. Some sample action steps will focus on incorporating themes into play because play is so important for our youngest students. There's always a strong focus on play and social interactions and teaching those social interaction skills at the preschool level. And again, I know we've talked about this before, but it's even more important now as the continued impact of the pandemic on our youngest learners. Our students who, students who will be turning three in this upcoming March of 2023 are the COVID babies who were born during quarantine. So our students who are three to five right now are all those students who didn't have the opportunity to have those social interactions, even perhaps with like family members and cousins and, you know, and going to preschool or daycare programs, as many of our students in the past have had the opportunity to do. So Carrie and I met a parent the other day who said to us, you know, we came home from the hospital in March of 2023, and my child was home for months and months and unable to go out and interact with other people. So, you know, I think this particular group, like even the five-year-olds that we have right now were two when the pandemic started, so, you know, they went home during quarantine and maybe didn't have the opportunity to interact with other kids their age during that crucial time in their developmental skills for their social skills. So we felt like this, although it ties in a little with what we did last year with the feelings, it's still a really important skill for our students this age, so we're gonna keep working on that. And then our third goal focuses on kindergarten. So during the school year 2022-2023, the kindergarten teachers will fully implement the illustrative mathematics core math resource to meet the academic standards presented in the 2017 Mass Curriculum Frameworks for Math. And there are some kindergarten kiddos doing some math activities there on the bottom of that slide. These are the core math skills to be targeted in kindergarten according to the Massachusetts curriculum framework, and the scope and sequence of the illustrative mathematics program aligns with the state kindergarten frameworks. For some action steps, sample action steps for goal number three. I spoke a little bit in the reflection from last year's goal about the initial training and rollout. So this year, they completed their training during our September, late PD Day was focused on the illustrative math digital platform training. So throughout the year, the teachers are expected full implementation, and then the illustrative math has built-in progress monitoring tools. So similar to the reading, we'll use those progress monitoring tools, and the data we gather from them will be shared during building ILTs in order to help plan next steps and any interventions that students might need.
Thank you.
That's it. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Mr. Guttrow.
I had a couple of questions. That was a fascinating point that you just made about, many of them were born or just super young during the pandemic and really lacked the ability to socialize or understand what normalized socialization is. So just based on your experience over the years, did you observe anything differently? Or are kids just kids when they're put in that situation, you know, in the social situation? And what feedback this year do you get from the parents that are like seeing probably socialization, how their kids are reacting to it, and any of that? Is there anything new and different that you're seeing based on?
I think some of our students who maybe would have participated, so we accept students starting at age three. So prior to their third birthday, they're out in other community daycare or early childhood programs. I went to a meeting with a parent today who said that starting in September was their child's first experience in school because she didn't feel comfortable sending him to school during the pandemic. So, you know, he's four years old now, and where students in the past may have been in daycare situations or other early childhood programs prior to coming to us. For many of our students, this is their first time now having any experience. Where in the past, maybe it wouldn't have necessarily been that way. I mean, some of them are always their first time with us, but.
Yeah, fascinating. Must be interesting to watch. And is there a cap in terms of the number of students that are accepted or wait lists? Just based on capacity and?
So currently, we, thank you. Our projected total, we can have 489 students district-wide.
489, is that what you said?
489 students.
And what were the numbers again? You said it from the outset.
Currently, right now, like 359.
359. And what, there's just, the student population, the population out there is just?
We're definitely finding a high need, especially. We're definitely finding a high need, especially students requiring special education or a lack of services from early intervention where everything's shut down.
And there's not a cap on the number of special education students, so if students have special education needs, we will accept them, and then we'll have to go from there. But the community students, it's just enough to meet those special ed versus community ratios in the integrated classrooms.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mrs. Lebo.
So, I noticed that there's no literacy goal for kindergarten this year. Are you comfortable with the assessments that we put in place and that they'll be sustained?
Yeah, I think so. And then when Mrs. Vaughn speaks next, she can talk about some of the literacy curriculum that will include kindergarten as well. So, when she presents her plan, the kindergarten students are included in that as well. So, there's a little bit of crossover there.
My only other question, and it's not really a question, but on the chart on page sixteen that shows the traits by month, so our kindergarten and older kids are in school every single day for a full day, so they're really getting a chance to see these things. It seems like a lot of changing for kids who are only in school three days a week. The three days a week?
The youngest students are two days, and we also have a four-day program.
And half-day?
Half-day, yeah. And then the substantially separate programs are five days a week.
Okay.
So, the integrated preschool has a two-day program and a four-half-day...
Seems like a very ambitious thing to change the theme on those kids that often where you don't see them that much. They might just be figuring out what respect is and you're moving on to helpful. It just seems like a lot to me.
Yeah, and I think that concepts that are previously taught will continue to be incorporated. You know, they're not gonna abandon respect and move on to the next one.
Oh, right, right.
You know, like that will still be incorporated throughout the ongoing lessons throughout the year.
Poor teachers are gonna be spinning...
And there's certain things that have always been a part of our pre-K program. We're now just really looking through it and being a little bit more purposeful in some of the consistent language that we're using in order to have that continuity from our pre-K moving into our kindergarten.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm just curious. We are using to assess district-determined measures. Help me understand what those are.
The district-determined measure at the kindergarten level is a developed checklist. So, it's just a check on basic needs as far as their early literacy, letter identification, shapes, colors.
Determined by who?
It's a little checklist that the teachers conduct.
The teachers come up with the determined checklist?
Yes, we have a, we have a DDM in the preschool program currently now, so it's the same. So, we check, the DDMs twice a year during the school year. When they enter and then, when they enter and then exiting the program.
Mrs. Lebo.
So, the teachers are not determining these measures. The team is.
No, no, no. It was created by the pre-K team.
Okay, and then the teachers are using it as an assessment tool.
And what it allows us to do is that, you know, one of the things that we know is on, is, you know, continuously, we're always looking for some evidence of progress with our students, but with preschool age and even kindergarten age children, there are no standard assessments. So, we've opted to really look at what are some of the core skills that we want our students to develop over their time, and we created our own determined measures.
And one last question. How about language barriers? You've got children coming in at a very young age. Do some of them not speak English?
Correct.
Yes.
Needs a lot of visual supports in the classroom, lots of multisensory strategies.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And also, we're in very frequent contact with Heather Wojcik from EL. So, if we ever do have questions, we do use, you know, some of her resources as well. And if you remember, gosh, it was years ago under Beth Al, we did implement a new EL premier for our pre-K students as well. So, if there are students that we ask significant concerns about, we certainly monitor them as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, take a vote, yes. On a motion of Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Guttrow, we approve. Superintendent.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Maekoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item B, Literacy Program Improvement Plan. Mrs. Vaughn to present. Mrs. Vaughn.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bridgette Vaughn, the coordinator of ELA in Literacy, and tonight, I'm thrilled to share with you the Literacy Program Improvement Plan for the Quincy Public Schools. First, I'll be sharing some of the why and the what of the QPS literacy program, and then I'll follow that by sharing some of the how. The presentation will share data and goals, but we'll also attempt to give you an idea of what literacy instruction looks like from our teachers and feels like for our students. So, I'm gonna begin with sharing our overarching ELA instructional vision statement, which guides all of our work. Last year, all educators were asked to construct this vision statement. We had meetings and shared language and ideas until a consensus was reached last November. All QPS students will have an equitable experience with English Language Arts in reading, writing, listening, and speaking based on the science of reading. Students will develop these necessary skills that are the foundations for creative and purposeful expression in language. Students of every background and ability will engage with high-quality, evidence-based, culturally-responsive, complex text and participate in writing and discussions anchored in evidence from the text to promote comprehension. Students will apply these skills while reading independently and see themselves as readers and writers who persevere in the face of challenging work. Educators believe that all students can achieve at the highest levels of English Language Arts. We partner with families and community members and hold ourselves accountable for the success of every student. And so, what is the QPS literacy program? Many of you have seen this before. It is a program developed to identify and support students who struggle to acquire foundational literacy skills. Students are selected by the ILT Integrated Learning Team based on test assessment results and overall reading performance, and then literacy teachers provide support and intervention using scientifically-based, research-reviewed programs to struggling readers in grades kindergarten through grade three. So, at the most basic level, coherent systems align supports in ways that advance core grade-level instruction for all students. Coherent systems build academic and social-emotional supports that prepare the way for and extend grade-level learning. This means that students engage in instructional experiences that have a palpable link and a notable relationship with each other and with core grade-level instruction. The QPS literacy program supports this notion with tiered systems. After successful completion of assessments, the Integrated Learning Team meets to analyze student performance and determine the level of support needed. Tier one is preventative practices for all students. Tier two supports targeted group interventions for some students, and tier three is intensive, individualized intervention. And now, I will turn to our reflection on last year's goals. So, goal one for last year, during the 2021-22 school year, K to two students will improve their foundational reading skills as evidenced by an overall decrease in the number of tier three students. This will be measured by a decrease of 5% for K to two students as indicated by the Amplify M-Class with Dibbles Eighth Edition Comparing Populations Report. So, in reflecting on this goal, I'm pleased to report that we were able to meet or exceed this goal with a decrease in tier three of 15% in kindergarten, a decrease in tier three of 17% in grade one, and a decrease of tier three in grade two by 6%. So, this is our kindergarten data, just kind of like highlighted and spotlighted here. In this M-class graph of our kindergarten data, you'll see that percentages are noted in red and yellow, which designates scores well below or below benchmark, green, which denotes at benchmark, and blue, which indicates above-benchmark percentages. The three 2021-22 timeframes show our three screening times of year, noting beginning, middle, and end of year. And so, tier three had 60% of kindergarten students needing intensive support, and by the end of the year, we were able to reduce that to 45%. Therefore, we met the goal of decreasing tier three support by 5% and actually decreased it by 15%. Similarly, in grade one, you can see that 50% of students needed intensive support in the fall, but by the end of the year, this was reduced to 33%. So, the goal of reducing tier three support was met by a decrease of 17%. And grade two data shows that 35% of students needed tier three support in the fall, but by June, this percentage was reduced to 29%. So, tier three was decreased by 6%. Our second goal is measured by MAP data. During the 2021-22 school year, the literacy team will support the district goal of combating learning loss in the area of reading comprehension through small group instruction and implementation of targeted reading interventions, as evidenced by an increase of 10 RIT points for grades two and three, as indicated by the NWEA MAP District Growth Summary Report. In reflecting upon this goal, while we were able to administer NWEA MAP to all grade two and grade three students, we were not able to measure reliable data for grade two. As you may recall, we switched the grade two reading test from the K to two growth assessment to the two-to-five growth assessment at the middle of the year, winter administration. For grade three, however, we were able to measure this goal. And in the bar graph before you, you can see that we were able to meet our goal in increasing grade three by 10 RIT points. In fall, our average RIT score for grade three was 190.7. The spring RIT average grew to an average of 201.9 RIT points, and therefore, grade three had an average RIT growth of 11.2 points. It's also important to note at the bottom there, when we look at national growth in grade three, which spans from 186.6 in fall to 197.1 in spring, Quincy students, while starting at RIT scores above national norms, still exceed RIT growth here. So, moving on to our goals and action steps in professional development for the 22-23 school year. That's kind of small, so I don't need to read that to you. Some of it is similar, but you'll note that in goal one, which is measured by the M-Class Early Literacy Screener, we aim to decrease students needing tier three support by 10% in K and one and 5% in grade two. Last year, in grades K and one, we more than exceeded the 5% decrease, so we decided to double that to 10%. And while this is an ambitious goal, we feel strongly that our action steps, new resources in professional development, will be able to adequately support strong, direct, explicit tier-one instruction as well as small group instruction in tier two and intensive support in grade three. And our second goal is a repeated goal of MAP, but we'll be including also the grade two data as well as the grade three. On this slide, you see the vast array of programs, resources, and interventions that our literacy specialists use to customize the support that each child may receive. Each one of these targets any or all of the five key elements of reading, namely phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. These curricula are all scientifically-based and research-reviewed, and our teachers receive continual training in them to ensure that our students are receiving the highest-quality support. Addressing such unprecedented academic challenges over the past few years requires more than just urgency or even a clear learning acceleration strategy. Systems must also emphasize instructional program coherence. This means that every component of the student academic experience should be tightly aligned and designed to advance core level, core grade-level instruction. The GLEAM grant opportunity allowed Quincy to do just that. With year-two funding from the Growing Literacy Equity Across Massachusetts Grant and the award to Quincy of $742,222, we are currently in the process of purchasing a new K to five, tier-one core curriculum. In a few moments, you'll see a video of this initial implementation of our new program, Amplify CKLA, Core Knowledge Language Arts, in action. With continual funding from the GLEAM grant in year three, Quincy will have received $1,014,222 to improve literacy equity in our district from 2022 to 2024. And now, I'd like to share with you the how. This first video is an example of tier-one core instruction in the knowledge strand of Amplify CKLA, which focuses on building language comprehension and background knowledge. First, you'll see first-grade teacher Kim DiBello and her wonderful first-grade students at Clifford Marshall. The primary focus of this lesson is speaking and listening. It was a review of the first two body systems that were covered so far, the skeletal and muscular systems, and introduces a new system, the digestive system, to these first graders. The lesson continues with a follow-up writing activity where students draw the digestive system in their body system books and write a sentence about the digestive system. So, we'll just play, it goes on for a bit, but we'll play a couple of this.
Today, we are gonna learn another system. So far, we have learned two body systems. Can somebody tell me what the first body system we learned was? Let's see. The skeletal system, excellent job. Who can tell me what the second system that we learned was? Naya?
The muscular system.
The muscular system, excellent. Those are two very important systems in our body that help our body to work together, right? Yes.
What's the other?
Today, we're gonna learn a new one. What is your most important muscle in your body that needs to keep working for you to live? I'm gonna go like this. Put your hands down. Ready? Shh. I'm gonna give you three seconds. Ready? One, two, three. Very good. Does your heart look like this?
No.
It doesn't? Show me what your heart looks like. Looks like a fist. Without healthy foods, we would not be able to move and walk and talk. So, these are very important for our bodies. They give us energy to help us stay warm. They also help us to stay alive and to breathe. So, these healthy foods are super important. So, it helps us also to grow when we're small children. Dmitri, can you help me? Can you show me? Can you show us? How long our small intestine is? It's 15 feet long. Dmitri, can you stand up for me? Can you take this part here? Now, everybody stand, and can you walk until it's straight? Keep walking, keep walking, keep walking. Keep walking. Okay. Look at this. Guess what this is? This is your small intestine. If I took this out of my body and stretched it out, this is what it would look like. Helps turn food...
Helps turn food.
...into energy. Very good. E, S, F, G.
Okay, so, so that was an example of a tier-one core instruction, listening and speaking lesson. So, I'm trying to give a variety of lessons here. The next one is a video of a tier-three support in Orton-Gillingham. Sarah Lane, a literacy specialist at Lincoln Hancock, is with a small group of third graders here, and on this particular day, they introduced a new phoneme. You'll hear them say "oo," says "oo" as in food, and they experienced all three association parts of an Orton-Gillingham lesson. The symbol-to-sound piece, which is phonogram cards, word reading, and sentence reading. Association two is sound-to-symbol, oral spelling, called what says. And association three, sound-to-symbol, SOS written spelling. And then, they were able to incorporate some fluency in reading in this as well. And then they were able to incorporate some fluency in reading in this as well.
A. H says "h" as in hat. F says "f" as in fish. W says "w" as in wind.
We were back in the game. We held on and came up with some big plays. Beth made some saves at home play that keeps us.
Kept.
Kept us. The sales did not have a play. She and.
What does "e" say, sweetheart?
Shep.
Good.
And I were safe.
Were safe. Good. So can you take a look at your first word, Elijah?
Broom.
Broom. Excellent.
Moon.
Moon.
Pool.
Pool.
School.
Spoon.
Spoon. Good. Broom. Gosh, you guys are experts.
And then finally, in the last video, we're going to see Elizabeth Good. She's a literacy specialist at Bernazani, and she is with a group of kindergarten students, and they are working on phonemic awareness skills by practicing Hagerty drills in rhyming, onset fluency, blending words, and segmenting sounds.
It's rhyming time, it's rhyming time, it's rhyming time, oh yeah! It's rhyming time, it's rhyming time, it's rhyming time, oh yeah! Rhymy words. Sound the same. At the end. Okay, you guys ready? Our hands are ready? Hen, pen. Beat, seat. Very good. Pat, hat. Mop, top. How about? Duck, luck. Are you guys ready? Now, we're going to say the word, and we're going to listen for the beginning sound. Are you ready? So I say the word and the beginning sound, and then you say it after me. So let me go first. You ready to listen? You ready? Bump, buh. Good job. Neck, mm. Gum, guh. Wait till I say it first. Very. Very good. Lost, ul. Good job. Okay. Good. Now, we're going to take two words and put them together to make a new word. Are you ready, Henry and Nolan? Get ready. Wait for me to say it first. Water, fall, waterfall. Good, let's do it together. Footprint, footprint.
So those were different examples. I know we cut them a little bit short, but you get a sense of, you know, a whole-group instruction, a listening and speaking activity, grade-one kindergarten and small-group Tier Three in Orton-Gillingham lessons there. So, in our list of professional development here, you see everything from GLEAM network meetings, where multi-tiered systems of support structures and database decision-making are discussed, to all of the various Amplify CKLA training that'll occur throughout the year. Teachers will receive everything from large-group overview training to customized coaching and training sessions at each of their sites. In addition to the professional development that teachers participate in and the instruction that is delivered during the school day, the literacy team also offers a very extensive, in part of the Literacy Action Plan, they offer a very extensive list of extended-day and family engagement opportunities, and that I included in the appendices of the Literacy Program Improvement Plan. Both the Literacy Action Plan and a sampling of extended-day and family engagement are listed there for you to take a look at. And then finally, we have our list of 20 amazingly supportive and talented literacy specialists. We greatly appreciate the school committee's continued support of the literacy program, and thank you for allowing us to continue this important work. And I would welcome any questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions? Mrs. Hubley?
Thank you. I just have one. On the literacy specialists.
Yes.
I see that there are some schools that have only one. Are they full-time? Or are any of these part-time?
Those are all full-time staff.
They're all full-time. And do we need to look at hiring for a second for some of these? I see six schools that only have one with enrollment. Should be making sure this is on our agenda for certain schools with enrollment that we need to be looking at to move ahead with possibly needing another literacy specialist.
I mean, of course, it would be amazing to always have more staff. We always look at, we've had part-time people in the past, so what we look at is we look at that data and the need for support. We look at the enrollment and size of that school, and then look at the assessment data to see, you know, what are the particular needs of that school. Right now, we have pretty small literacy groups, and I'm really hopeful and optimistic that with this core Tier One instruction that's coming, we can even be more targeted with the support that, you know, individual students need in literacy groups. But thank you for offering that, and we will always look at that as we move forward.
We'll keep our eye on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lebo.
Just a quick question. Can you remind me what SBRR stands for?
Yes. Scientifically Based Research Reviewed.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
I just have a comment. I think that listening to the presentation and the things that I appreciate is that the deliberateness of the ELA program, science, research, and professional development. And I think that because of that, you had great success with your program in 21-22. That doesn't happen by accident. So, thank you, because I think that, you know, your presentation showed that.
Thank you.
Mr. Gatto.
I'm just proud of how far the program has grown over the years. I mean, there were some dark days way back, and, you know, super-talented staff doing extraordinary things, and it's just an important part of the school system. So thank you.
Thanks very much.
Superintendent, on a motion of Mr. Gatto, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, we approve. Superintendent.
Misses Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gatto.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes. Mayakoke. Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent, 2021-2022 Summit of Evaluation, Mayakoke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packets, we all have some homework to do. Some of us have been through this before, not everybody has, but you have the form in the packet for the District Improvement Plan goals for this past school year. You've also been brought with the supporting materials in the Department of Elementary, Secretary of Education, the superintendent evaluation process, including the evaluation rubric. So, we need you to complete the form and return to Laura by November 9th. We have some subcommittee meetings at night if you want to bring it with you, or if you want to do it electronically, you can do that. It's been sent to you in a Word document, I believe. So, we have some homework to do. I'd ask everyone to get moving on. Ms. Lebo, any questions?
Just a comment. I just want to remind the members that we did get the reflection of all four goals for the four different domains last week. So, you can see the goals and what the reflection of them is. They're not listed on this particular document.
Okay. Thank you. Item D, Accountability Data Review. Mr. Gatto is referring this to the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Subcommittee. Mr. Gatto, for comment.
Mrs. Owens was refreshing my memory on what this was. I didn't, did I ask in a prior Subcommittee or?
You asked during the presentation at the last school committee meeting for this particular piece. This is the data on dropouts, attendance.
Yes.
And so you wanted, you had some questions.
Just referral to Subcommittee so that we could do a deeper dive on it.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item E, Student Travel Requests. We have quite a few here. First, out-of-state overnight trips. We have December 1 through 4, Quincy High School, grades 10 to 12, to Yale University for Model Congress, New Haven, Connecticut. On a motion of Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, we approve. Do we need a vote on each one, Superintendent?
Just a voice vote.
Yes. Voice vote. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. We now have June 8 and 9 to Point Webster Middle School, grade eight, to New York City. On a motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, we approve. All those in favor?
On the motion, can I?
On the motion, Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the cost of this. It's $475 a student. If we have 20 students that don't go, and it looks like they probably have 70 students in that grade, based on their paperwork, if we have 20 students that don't go on that trip because they don't have the money, it seems kind of...
I believe the students have fundraising opportunities, you know, there's opportunities to.
Individual student fundraising?
Yes, of the cost of the trip. But they really do work with the families to make sure any people who want to go are able to go.
I'm perfectly fine approving this, but I would like to find out at some point in time if there were kids who are excluded from this because of financial reasons.
And again, we work to make sure that doesn't happen, but if that does, we'll let you report back on that.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Student travel requests out of the country. April 14 to 23, we have Quincy High School, grades nine to 12, members of grades nine to 12, going to Paris, France, Milan, and Rome. Any questions? Okay. On a motion of Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Gatto, we approve. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We also have July 12 to 21, North Quincy High School, members of grades nine to 12, to Paris, France, and Barcelona. On a motion of Mr. Gatto, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, we approve.
Question?
Question, Mrs. Hubley.
Yeah, if we could just note that the nurse still needs to sign off on this one. I'm perfectly happy to vote yes on it, but just that we make sure that we get the nurse's signature before.
Okay. Based on that request?
Yes, and the nurse did not sign off because the students haven't signed up yet.
Yes, just so that in the future, to make sure that before this trip happens, the nurse signs off on it.
And also, on the motion, just I have a question about, these teachers are going to do this on their own time?
Yeah, it's April vacation. April vacation and July, yes.
Nice. Any chaperones needed, anyway?
All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. We have an additional trip. I'm going to put it under additional business, and that's the ROTC program. Would like to go to, for members of grades nine to 12, would like to go to Windsor, Connecticut. Looks like the travel date is 11/19.
Motion to approve?
Motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, we approve. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Communications. Upcoming school committee meetings are November 16, December 7, at 6:30 here at Cardington. Upcoming Subcommittee meetings at Cardington. Athletics and Wellness, December 5 at 6 o'clock. Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, November 30 at 7. Policy, November 9 at 7. Special Ed, December 5 at 6:45. Teaching and Learning, we have a number of dates, November 9, 14, and 28, as well as 29 and 30, all at 6 o'clock. Any questions, comments? Mrs. Lebo.
May I add a communication?
Sure.
So, I don't think you folks have seen this, but Mr. Segala is not here, but Mr. Segala sent a communication, I believe the Superintendent did too, to the Desi about their concerns around increasing the hour requirement for Chapter 74 programs, which would have eliminated our ability to provide any. And Mr. Segala was a leader, helped lead this effort at the state level with the comprehensive directors, and this letter went out. So I'd like our colleagues to see, at least Mr. Segala, as I think the Superintendent also sent the letter.
I did as well.
Most of the Superintendent signed the letter, but I really think that he deserves some credit for championing this and to make sure that we'll be able to do it. It hasn't changed anything yet, but this would eliminate our ability to, in all comprehensive high schools', ability to provide Chapter 74 programs. I just want to thank him, and I want you to get that communication.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sorry, Mr. Gatto.
Another question about a potential communication that the Mayor, the Superintendent might know about. So I saw a gentleman last night from the Elks that said that they were donating dictionaries to all second-grade students.
He asked me to pass the packet on to the Superintendent, who's going to follow up with them.
Okay, understood. So is that going to be, we accept that at a subsequent meeting?
Yes, I'll put that under Superintendent's report and thank the Elks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gatto. Reports of Subcommittee's, we have none. We'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for contract negotiations.
We're not returning for a regular session.
And we will not be returning to our regular session.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hubley.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gatto.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
And Mayakoke.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.